Good evening. I'm gonna call this to order. Thanks for coming to your city council meeting tonight. Uh, November twenty seven, twenty twenty-three. We have two counselors online, Kuhnehan and Rivera. And one counselor in Spain and four of us here in person. So, good evening. Uh, the first thing we're gonna do is remember to turn off our cell phones. Secondly, let's keep in mind as we meet tonight, we remember that we are stewards of land that has been home to indigenous people for thousands of years. We honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today. Let's stand and say the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda additions or corrections, Abigail?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no additions or corrections.
Business from the audience. I understand we have one gentleman online. Jen, can you bring him in?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Oh, good.
Thanks for joining us. We'd love to, uh, hear what you have to say. If you could keep it, you know, to three or four minutes, that'd be great.
I will absolutely do that. Uh, this is Locklit Work. I don't think you can see me, and I think that's okay. Uh, I live here on Sherman Avenue, twenty-two oh-four, just above the Safeway. I'm here to talk about a agenda item that's later on your schedule tonight, dealing with public art. Uh, wanna comment in capacity as a concerned citizen and as an advocate for the arts. Here to urge you carefully, please, to consider the potential for overregulation of murals on private property within our beautiful city. This conversation that you're gonna have began about a year ago. Two nonprofits, uh, the Columbia Center for the Arts and Hood River Elks approached the city about a murals arts project to help create an arts block and tell the story of Hood River's history. Uh, city asked us to defer the project while you sorted through a framework for public arts display. That's a request we've honored and we fully support, um, as we move forward. I have been surprised at the degree to which it appears that there's, that support for public arts has been undermined to some degree by a fear that art may challenge people, you know? Uh, there seems to be this impulse that if we can't control what artists create, we should probably relegate their work to out of the way places where tourists and history lovers, of which I count myself, won't be bothered by it. Um, I want you to consider murals. They're not merely decorations. You know, they're a vital form of public art that enriches our cultural landscape. It promotes public discourse. It bolsters our local economy, particularly in tourism reliant districts. Uh, we all stand to, you know, they stand to provide several key public benefits if we allow them to move forward. First of all, cultural enrichment. Uh, firstly, public art plays a crucial role in the cultural enrichment of our community. Murals bring art into the public sphere. It makes it accessible to all regardless of their socioeconomic status. Uh, they serve as public exhibitions where citizens and visitors can experience art in their daily lives. It fosters a sense of cultural awareness and appreciation. Uh, by denying the creation of murals, we risk impoverishing our city's vibrant cultural tapestry. We don't wanna do that, right? Uh, secondly, public discourse. Uh, murals often become focal points for public discourse. This is what we're talking about. Uh, they're expressions of community values, historical milestones, and social commentary. Though these public, through these public artworks, we find a canvas for conversations and a reflection of our collective consciousness. Any regulation that stifles this form of expression excessively would hinder our community's ability to engage in meaningful dialogue about issues that matter to us all. I also wanna talk about commercial enhancement tourism. Uh, the, the economic implications of such a prohibition cannot be overstated. Murals have the power to transform ordinary streets into tourist destinations. They attract visitors who come not only to witness the beauty of these artworks, but also to spend in local businesses. Our secondary streets in the downtown historic district in particular stand to benefit immensely from the allure of public murals. Uh, these will act as a magnet for cultural tourism and encourage visitors to stay longer, explore more, directly benefiting local businesses and enhancing the economic vitality of our area. Now, there are acceptable regulatory measures. I heard some good ideas that you're gonna, uh, talk about this evening. Um, there are guardrails in place that, you know, they help to, uh, we have, we have the Historic Landmarks Review Board. They have tremendous powers already, uh, to say, hey, what makes sense and what doesn't on new buildings. Um, and the First Amendment does have constraints that allow for constraints on hate speech, obscenity, and other forms of content that don't comply with clearly delineated community standards. That's already existing, right? We don't need new regulations to make that possible. Um, all right, I recognize I'm running short of time here. I don't want to, uh, you know, take too much of the airspace here. So let me just conclude by saying, you know, the restriction of public art excessively would be a real missed opportunity for Hood River to establish itself as a culturally rich, economically vibrant, conversational and dynamic Oregon city. I urge you to consider the far reaching benefits that public murals contribute to our community and reject any measure that would prohibit their creation. Instead, let us embrace a framework built in collaboration with our arts community that supports the flourishing of public art in a way that respects our community standards while promoting cultural and economic growth. I appreciate your consideration on this. I appreciate you taking the time to think about it. I hope we can move forward together and do some great art downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for your commentary. Next, we have a presentation from Hood River Valley Parks and Rec. I see you are here in force. Thanks y'all for your service. I know that some of you are staff and some of you are unpaid volunteers. Good job.
There you go. Turn the green. All right. Well, uh, thank you very much for inviting me to, uh, present to you, uh, this evening. Um, I am here kind of to do two things. One is I wanted to give you, uh, an update from the last time that you saw me uh, at our, uh, October third joint meeting. Thank you also for participating at that. And, uh, um, and then a request and, uh, um, just request to open up a conversation and start talking about kind of an exciting opportunity for us. Um, so, let's see. Okay. Uh, the, or the PowerPoint is telling me I have to create, skip for now. PowerPoints. Sign in. It wants me to sign in.
Um, just accept that. And then you just click once in the screen. Just make sure that's active.
Start your free trial. I have a product. Oh, there we go. Okay, let's, let's start. All right. I won't tell anyone you didn't pay your license. Office three sixty-five. All right. Um, so, uh, the last time you saw me, October, uh, October third. So we had a joint meeting where we all came together, um, with the county, um, the ports, the school district, us and the Parks District, the local parks providers, um, to give you an update on some of the things that we had been working on and talking about. As many of you know, we have been working for many years to look at our funding opportunities. Um, and partnering with, uh, you all, um, in October of twenty twenty, we, uh, jointly passed, uh, the Hood River Valley, uh, uh, the Hood River Multi-Jurisdictional Master Plan. Um, and, uh, um, and that was a big push. We spent a couple of years putting that thing together. Um, and it included lots of goal settings, so, uh, five main goals, eighteen policies, ninety-four strategies. And they were put together by all of us, uh, and put into a really cool matrix, uh, that, that shows, uh, who was the lead on it and, uh, um, and who would be supporting it, others on it, and, uh, um, all sorts of stuff, uh, in, in these goals. It turned out to be a really good document. I think that it was a good, uh, use of our time putting all of that together. And it gave us some guiding principles and some strategies here. Um, one of the main things that the Parks District, uh, well, the other thing that we put there was the, the capital plan where we all planned for our capital together of what sort of things that we need to increase or to, 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 uh, fix the Parks District. I don't expect anyone to read this, but, uh, uh, to build and grow. And, uh, um, and then, um, some of the things that we started to implement after the plan was, was created. Uh, we looked at, uh, um, we had these maps that showed the target acquisition areas and where we would need parks if we're expanding. And, um, we had a forty-year outlook on this capital plan. And in just the first three years after doing that, we've got seven acres, uh, that you guys got affordable housing, um, that, uh, has one acre set aside for it for a park. Um, that is right over the top of one of the dots that we already had there. We purchased twenty acres over on the west side of Hood River for the West Side Park. Um, we have ten acres under contract with ODOT right now, uh, at another spot where the star was, and that's part of the, uh, the Campbell property and, uh, connecting, um, that trail, um, the Indian Creek Trail. And, uh, then we also have a four-acre park that's under contract in Parkdale. Um, so we have been working really hard to, uh, to, to address a lot of the capital needs. But the operation needs is still where we are struggling and the main thing, um, the, uh, um, the, the one thing that we're always talking about, the pool. We talked a little bit about the condition of the pool. The pool is falling apart. Uh, we've, uh, we operate that picture on the right. This is our, our maintenance operations center. It's a fourteen by eighteen foot shed in our parking lot. Um, and, uh, um, and then below there, just a, a, a little, uh, example of many of the other parks, uh, district rates around the state. Um, just a brief history. I know you've all heard me say it before, but the Parks District was founded in nineteen ninety specifically just to take care of the pool. At only thirty-four cents per thousand, and now it's about half of what we do as the pool. And the other half is we've expanded to, uh, eight parks that we have, three point five miles of trail. And now we've just bought and, and, uh, have, uh, are in process to go with another thirty-five, forty acres worth of land that we're trying to build and expand for the future. So, we were looking at funding options and we brought, uh, a memo there and, uh, our consultant's Bob Kiefer from, uh, um, the Special Districts, uh, Association. And, uh, um, and shared with you, uh, uh, our, our options and what we were looking at. And we were presented, um, uh, a prepared food and beverage tax, or just prepared food tax, or a, uh, doing it traditional way with a bond and levy. And, um, it seemed like the group overwhelmingly really wanted to go with the traditional route of the, uh, the, the bond and the levy. Um, and that is something that the Parks District has the authority to do within ourselves. And so, uh, that is the direction that, that we have decided to go is, is with the bond and the levy. So, we are looking right now for a May of twenty twenty-four capital bond. Um, the capital bond will be, uh, replacing the pool with a pool slash community center. Um, developing, uh, the West Side Park, um, doing some other parkland developments, uh, and some of that includes, um, uh, the, uh, um, you know, Parkdale Park and, um, and, you know, other places that we can knock off on the master plan, kind of the low hanging fruit things. Some trail enhancements, uh, the, the missing link stuff. We luckily were able to get that ODOT grant for the Campbell property, but there are still some other missing links. And when we get that, the grant is just for that one piece of property. We still need to be able to connect along the road and, uh, uh, Cross Arrowhead Drive and some other things there. So we'll need some more funding there. And then, uh, building, uh, a proper park shop, um, and maintenance and, and all the things that we'll need to, to, uh, take care of these assets. Um, on the levy side, the operation levy side of it, uh, we are, um, we need the money to, to, to expand and to do all these different things. In fact, I mean, we, we are well under what we should be doing right now. We, uh, only have one maintenance person for the pool and all of this as far as full-time staff goes. Um, and so, um, it is, uh, looking at bringing on, um, enough maintenance people to, uh, to maintain all of our assets at a higher level of service. Right now, our level of service is more reactive. If something breaks, we fix it. We're looking to bring it at a more proactive level and, uh, and be able to, uh, to, to have a really professional way of maintaining our parks. Um, the aquatic center as well. We only have one full-time person there. Um, it's very hard to bring on staff and to, to continue to operate that. So we're going to be able to have enough staff to, uh, to operate, especially if we're building the center. And, uh, if it is a multi-floor center, we'll need to have, uh, uh, you know, more staff to be able to, uh, to, to manage, uh, uh, something like that. Um, recreation programming. We took on recreation programming a couple of years from the school district, but that came with a timeline of when that, uh, money would be, um, uh, phased out by the school district, which is, we're coming up on. They gave us three years. Um, and, uh, we're in the final of that, that, that three-year period right now. Um, and then on the admin side, we increased all of that. We need more, uh, for overhead on, uh, HR management, finance management. And then if we're building all those capital projects, we're going to need some, uh, some help with, uh, with capital planning and project management. So we've put together, uh, a lot of, uh, estimates on, on what we're doing, uh, for operations as well. Right now, this is our timeline. We have been talking about this for many, many years. It looks like we've got, uh, that it's all going very quick, which it is, but at the same time, we've got five years, six years, seven years worth of, uh, planning behind all of this. Uh, but right now, we are coming to the city council tonight to talk about pool sites. Um, so, little history. This is a really cool picture I found on the west side of Hood River. Um, and, uh, said it was dated in nineteen twenty-seven. You can see the high school there, which is now the middle school. Um, and the next picture is kind of cool. I zoomed in a little bit and colored this. So you can see, this is the public workshop. This was the, uh, this is the big gravel pit. It was already gravel pit at that point right there. That's why it's all kind of dug in right there. Here is where the, uh, uh, the school currently sits. This is the site where the pool currently is, the site where the fire station currently is, and the site where Friendship Park is. And then this area back in here is all, uh, this would be Collins Field over here and Jackson Park through here. This picture is from the mid nineteen fifties, taken kind of from the other angle, but, uh, uh, same direction here. You can see again the pool. Um, Jackson Park was deeded to the city in, uh, nineteen thirty-nine. And, uh, um, and Collins Field was put in shortly after that. So you can see the, uh, the baseball field, uh, right here as well. So I think that was nineteen forty-one or so when the field went in. And the pool, the pool was built in nineteen forty-seven, actually is a World War Two memorial. Um, and it was owned and operated by the city of Hood River for, uh, many, many years. Um, in fact, I found, uh, you know, going through a bunch of stuff there at the office, we had the original. We had the original black uh brass plaque that hung on the door back there uh, uh, with all of the city council. Uh, people's uh, uh, names uh on it, um, dedicating the building in nineteen forty-seven. It's pretty cool. Um, in nineteen uh eighty-eight, the, there was, the, the pool was failing. And uh, the city decided they could no longer uh continue to run it. There was an outdoor pool at the time, and this is a picture of. Some of the original leaders that came together um from the Parks District to form the Parks District. They formed a committee. And uh, looked at these funding mechanisms and saw if we started a Parks and Recreation District, it was more of a pool district. Um, we'll be able to uh to 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 create a revenue stream and save the pool. So they put something on the ballot that passed in May of nineteen ninety, and that's what created the Parks District. Um, so. This is the site right now, the Jackson Park kind of site, and I included Public Works in there as well, just to kind of show some of the acreage all around there. And and just to, you can kind of see, it's a bit of a hodgepodge as far as jurisdictional stuff. It's kind of, it's changed a little bit over the years, but. Jackson Park is around two point five acres, Collins Field is around two point six. Um, the tennis court area is about another one, one point one acres. Um, and then there's a shared parking, and there's only about seventy-three parking stalls there uh that uh is actually owned by the school district. So the colors are also, who owns the land? Blue is city, purple's Parks District. Uh, green is uh the school district. Um, and so uh, we uh, when we formed the Parks District and took over the pool. Um, part of that was to deed us the, the, the land right there, and so we have that parcel, it's one point three acres. Uh, but we don't even own the parking lot, so we have an agreement with the school district where we can do a shared thing on that parking lot. Um, and uh, um, and uh, yeah, then across the way, of course, a city public works. There's nine acres there, county public works, three point five acres, so um, it's a really cool area of town. Um, you know, across the street from the middle school, walking distance to uh May Street, kind of between the Heights and downtown. Um, or I think the Heights Business District, I'll say, in in downtown, um, uh, you know, two schools can walk to it. We really explored a lot of different sites when we were looking at where we would put a new pool. We, we looked, you know. Uh, at other places in the valley, we looked down on the waterfront, we looked all over, and we really like this site. It's such a cool area of town. I mean, it's just the center of town and um, and just around a lot of uh, um, a, a lot of nice amenities. The hospital's right there. We love being next door to the fire station, especially whenever uh our lifeguards have to call nine-one-one, which isn't too often, but they uh, they. They sometimes just go walking across, which is just a very, very nice spot for us. Um, this is a concept that uh I grew up myself. It's uh not, nothing's really to scale here. But it's uh just, just tossing some things there and just to kind of reimagine what it could look like. From what it looks like. Jackson Park Complex is what I'll call it, but it's, you know, a bunch of different smaller parks all the way around there. It, it never really had a master plan or or uh, um, uh, uh. A, 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 a vision from the very beginning of what it would be. It was just, well, let's put the fire station here, and let's put the pool over here, and let's put this over there. So it is a little bit of a hodgepodge with all of these different spots, and we were really looking at. The, the limitations that we have on that site with where the pool is. Um, and uh, with just being one point three acres. Really, if we want to expand, we want to make things bigger. We're thinking that the pool footprint is the same as it was in nineteen forty-seven. And uh, thinking about how, what the population is going to be like in the next forty years and building for that, we're thinking we probably need a little bit more space here. Um, we would reconfigure the pool some, but really the only way for us to add any sort of community space is to. Do multiple stories, which gets expensive and there's not space for a gym, and so it would be. Probably going downgrade, cutting into uh, uh, into the earth there, entering this right off the road on May Street. So you're entering at the grade of May Street and then a three-story building um with the pool kind of on the middle floor there. Uh, but it splits things up where operationally it's not the best. Um, and uh, and it would be just kind of a tricky uh, a, a tricky site for us to build something really large on. We're also looking at parking. The parking is, is, is pretty bad on that, um, on that site already with only seventy-five spots or so. Um, and so, uh, building this newer, larger facility with uh more demand for parking just makes it tough. Uh, um, with, you know, with what we had there. There's some ideas with talking with the uh, uh, the church across the streets. And seeing if we can get a shared agreement with them as well. But then we were looking at the tennis courts, that we, we know that the tennis courts uh were built in a bit of a swamp. That they are sinking, and the city a few years ago had said that they uh are not planning on reinvesting in the tennis courts at that site. Because of the uh, the, the, the land issues and and the quotes on, on how much money it would cost in order to take care of all the drainage issues there. And so, looking at a couple of these things on our site and that, and then looking over there at the, at the field. Collins Field is a, a, a great field, but it really has been underutilized uh for, for many years. This summer, I think I, I saw it being used more um than I've ever seen it, but it's mostly in the evenings by adults in the uh, the softball. League, um, which is, is great, I'm glad that people are using it, but. You know, baseball fields are a tricky thing where there's very limited use on it. If there's not as much multi-use, when you, when you do a men's or boys' uh high school baseball field, it's ninety-foot bases. Lily, the Little Leaks can't use it, uh, the softball can't use it with the mound and such. They do use it for recreational softball ball. But it's very specific on what it can be used, and so the, we don't really see as many youth using it, just some high school youth programs. Um, but uh, the, the high school has their own uh, uh varsity baseball field that they play at. And it's not used as much. When we, for the most part in Parks and Rec, what we see when we're building new fields is a lot of multi-use fields. And so fields that can be used for lots of different things, um, and, and turf fields and things like that. So we just thought it could be improved there. Um, and then also just the, the location with Jackson Park. Jackson Park is uh over on the side of the field. There's not really much uh interaction between the field and Jackson Park, whereas if we were to flip it and there was a community center there. You could have a community center slash pool with a lot of windows that look right out over the top of Jackson Park. If we had classroom space and things like that for our summer camp program, the summer camps uh could spill into Jackson Park and do things there. Um, lots of really cool stuff with like a splash pad. Um, splash pad is one of those things that we hear a lot of people saying that they really want. But they are expensive to run. Um, they uh, um, there's two ways to run a splash pad. One is you can just waste the water, um, where uh you just kids hit a button, the water just goes straight out to the sewer. We don't think that that's very socially responsible. We don't see a lot of places doing that. There are still some places that do do that because it is so much cheaper. If you do that, you don't have to worry about treating the water. If you do a recycling system, which is what we would ever, we, we would do if we ever put in a splash pad. Then it has the exact same uh, um, guidelines that a pool has, even though uh people are going in the water. Um, you know, it, it, you still have to go and test the water, um, you know, every couple hours and, and. And check all the chemicals and such, and so it just doesn't make sense to have one down at like waterfront park or something like that. You should have staff going by there all the time checking. Uh, um, uh, checking stuff. So to have it somewhere close to a pool really makes sense. So if you had it, if we had the pool over here, we could run pipes over, but have a, um, a, a, a splash pads. Kind of near the playgrounds right there, and then um, we could do all of the testing in the same room where we're testing the rest of our pools too. Um, you'll see this over in the Dells, they put a splash pad on the outside of the pool, and the other great thing about that is it's a equity thing. If a family can't afford to go swimming in the pool, um, they can come and use the splash pad that's on the outside of the fence for free. Um, so it's a way for people to still come and be able to uh cool down, um, and uh, and, and, and use it during the summer. Um, but really the only good way to do those is to do it at a spot where you already have full-time staff. And especially if you've got staff that are checking, checking water and such too. So, um, you know, if the pool was over here, we could still do it outside splash, splash pad, but then you got kids going back and forth across the parking lots. And uh, on the baseball field to go between the playground and the splash pad, it just. Makes sense to have it all kind of in the same spot. So. Um, our idea there is we, we don't believe that we should just get rid of tennis courts and um, uh, and fields. But we will be developing the West Side uh Park, and so we are thinking that if we did it right, we could. Uh, set it up to where this is coming in at the same time, uh, the, the West Side Park. Uh, don't know exactly how all of the timing would work, but I think that. Uh, um, uh, that we could try and make it so that we're. Threading the needle and making sure that everything kind of gets built with uh, at, you know, so that. We're, we're not having to go without things. Um, but uh, we could either move this over to uh, to West Side Park. Where we're going to be building anyways, or um, uh, we could also on the tennis courts, we've talked to the school district about them wanting to have. Their varsity tennis program at the school. Right now, their varsity tennis program comes down to May Street and practices there. Um, we don't have space right here, but we have met, the school district and us has met, have met with the owners of Double Mountain. Who happen to own the industrial lot next door to the school right there, and they're interested in the conversation of, of us. Uh, doing some sort of a long-term lease or uh, you know, hopefully purchasing a little part right off of Golden Eagle Park. Where we already just built two tennis courts in twenty seventeen. We could build four more. That shows what uh, the uh, what the Seruda Courts look like. Laid right over the top of that. Um, and uh, to be able to put in uh those tennis courts on that vacant land that's just a bunch of uh, um. Uh, weeds right now. So, um, it'd be right there adjacent to the school. So I think there's a lot of different things that we could do. Um, I talked about a lot of these, but a couple of other ones I didn't mention is the pool may not have to close temporarily. If we did this right and we had another place to build while the pool was open, we could keep the pool open and build at that other site. If we have or can only build at our site, the pool is going to have to be closed for at least a year. Um, and so that would be very tough for the community to go that long without having our pool here. Um, we could expand the parking and have more parking spots there. Uh, we could do multipurpose fields. I talked a little bit about that. But more space, the better layout, and then the city goals and I, I, uh, um. I hadn't uh mentioned this one right here. I know a lot of you were familiar with the uh, uh. The new test um, uh pedestrian area right there from the safe routes to school, which was so cool, uh, and we saw it being used daily. Just as a person that works in that building right there, every single day, middle schoolers are off of the beaten path and coming down here. Um, and outside of the streets, and it was very well-used. But this is just a weird corner right here, uh. Going way back, um, but uh, to those nineteen twenty-nine pictures, you can see that it was this way when it was all filled right there. I remember looking at that picture earlier today and just like, gosh, why, why was it like this? It's not like it went around anything right there. What the heck? But that's how it was for many years, but um, there uh, uh, we could, you know. Straighten that out and uh, and connect right there, uh, the, the, the streets and make that a little bit better. And then also, um, I know that we've talked with the city councils, talked for many years about uh, uh, the, the police station and finding a new police station site. Um, many of the sites uh that we're looking at downtown are, you know, on existing parking and have their pros and cons and lots of drawbacks. And, and, and things there as well, but just trying to find that right site is, is difficult. But, you know, there are many, many cities that look at these kind of operation centers where you have a fire station in the city's uh fire. Uh, sits uh and a police station next door to each other, and then you've got Pu- Public Works right over there. So you've got kind of all of your city's operations all in one area. It puts them all over on the other side of the park area. Um, and then closer to the school, it's nice to have a police department right in there. It's, there's a lot of different things that I think could be used. Or it doesn't have to be a police department and whatever else, but um, being able to, to, to look at that uh with a little bit more purpose. Um, on what we would do with that property. So, um, you know, right now, we're still, you know, we're getting close to putting something on the ballot. And so we are trying to make decisions, but we're also not coming here and asking for a decision right now. What we're asking for is the city to open the conversations and say, is this something you're interested in? So that we can start exploring it a little bit more and seeing what other things we really need to uh, 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 to, to, to look into. As far as, you know, quoting this and, and uh, and, and seeing what sort of interest the city might have in uh, um. Our, our concerns the city might have and see if we can address some of those. Um, but we do want to know if, if, if you're seriously wanting us to move forward and looking at some of these things. And, and interested in being a partner with us and that's rebuilding the pool and uh, and, and looking at uh, at reimagining this whole park. It's a lot of different scenarios that could happen with this, uh, with the management of the park too. Uh, uh, I know that we've talked a lot about cooperation. Over the years of uh, um, and consolidation of our, you know, our, our parks efforts, um, uh, as far as maintenance goes and such. Um. I don't see it happening all at once. Um, I think that that's a huge push in order for us to do this big consolidation right now, especially before May. But I could see that that's a worthy goal to move toward, but I could see something like if Jackson Park, if you said, okay, we, you know, you guys can do this. But um, then maybe the Parks District, if you guys have so many different things, capital projects going in there, you should be managing this area. And so we could look at maybe a handoff of the management of that park to uh, the Parks District. Um, and uh, um, and, and see how that works. So there's a lot of different ways that we could do it, or the city could continue to manage that. That's probably okay too, but it would take a lot of, you know, IGAs and different things like that. To make sure that we've got it figured out. Um, and then we're open to the conversation in the future of what other things um, uh, we can do. To uh, to share resources and to uh, uh, to, to do a better job of managing our park space together. There's not always a different agencies running different things, so. Um. See if I have another. So that's it for uh, um, uh, for my presentation, and I'd just like to entertain questions. And see what kind of interest uh, has in this.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yep.
Great, thank you very much. Let's go popcorn, raise your hand if you want to talk. That's great. So in, in your proposed plan, I'll just call it land plot. Um, the additional parking that's supposed to be put in isn't shaded. Uh, I assume that's. Prior at city ownership, would it say city ownership would be um, the school ownership, would it be Parks District ownership?
Um, I think that would all have to be worked out. I mean, so the existing parking lot right now is school district, but that other one, I don't know if that would turn over to the Parks District. Or uh, um, uh, or the school district. I don't know if the school district would, would want it. But uh, um, but I think that they would have to be pulled into the conversation and talk about that. Uh, um. Really, when I think about like all of the ownership of all of the properties, I mean, there are implications to who owns the land. But there's also, it's all public lands that the public is all using together. Um, and uh, and the public. Does not step off the curve of the pool and realize that they're stepping into city or into school district property. And then walk down to the tennis courts and realize they're stepping into city property. So I, you know, uh, that's all stuff that I think would have to be worked out, but I don't know. Yeah.
Uh, and have you talked with the school district about their lot and incorporating it into this plan?
Uh. I've had conversations with, with the superintendent, the old superintendent about this whole uh, uh. Concept before and uh, um, it didn't seem to be any concerns.
The, the, the bond uh is two elements, both capital and operational.
Mm-hmm.
Um, had you, you know, how the numbers uh behind how much of it is capital and how much is operational?
Yeah, majority of it is capital, capital. The, the numbers will change some, especially if, if uh, there's interest in this, the, the. This will probably be a little bit more expensive to figure these things out, but uh, um, the uh, the capital's about double what the operation side is.
And that would be a five-year?
It's uh, well, twenty-five years for the capital and then a five-year for the operational that would be renewed. Or have to be renewed.
Thanks for coming. Um, I'm probably gonna have to do multiple things as my brain functions over this, but uh, um. You, when you said you're obviously not looking for an answer tonight, and I appreciate that, but what kind of timeline are, are you looking at? And what do you need if you're incorporating this into the bond or not? Um, or like, what, what level of answer would you need at what point to?
I think uh, like, I, I think that uh, we would need a, okay, this sounds like a really good idea. We're serious about this. Um, uh, it would be nice if we got a, uh, it, it could come in a couple phases. If in December, if you had a conversation about this, you, you know, and, and you said like, we're serious about this, we think this is a good idea. We, we can see ourselves supporting this, but we need to have more uh information. You tell us what those sorts of, sort of things are. That gives us some direction to start doing some of these things. We are looking at February um, for when we are kind of coming up with our final. All what's on the list, well, how much money is it and all of that stuff, uh, because we have to have it on the ballot uh and ready to go in mid-March. And so, um, uh, we are still. There, there, there's still some things that can change with where we put it and different things. We've got some flexibility around that, but that would tell us a little bit more on like what we need to do to uh, uh. To the bond amount and, and, and where we need to put it. Uh, if. Uh, if if we believe that the city's going to be uh serious around this.
Okay. Um, and then the other timeline question of, you know, so putting it on the ballot, May twenty-four, uh assuming that's successful, what kind of timeline do you have for doing the actual on the ground work? Or or needing, you know, land to change hands or things to start actually being built? Like, when would when would you need it to be like the city is like, oh, and we're not just interested, but like, yep, we've signed whatever agreements? Or or we've given up the land or we've done whatever?
Yeah, we would, we would need to be working very quickly on that stuff to where if we got, if we passed the the bond, um, it would probably be at least a year with the design work. But right right away, right off the bat, the design work is going to be, well, where are we going to be putting it?
Okay.
Um, and so uh, because that will inform what kind of building we are designing. And so I think that uh that that uh um it would have to be sometime in the um uh late summer or fall of next year or so before we're starting to put that sort of things together and where we want to be doing it.
Sorry, there's a lot going on in that market. Um, I get, you know, so there's, and I, you know, obviously you guys are going for a bond, but there's obviously there would be um quite a bit of cost to, you know, moving the different fields, swapping all this stuff around. Like, are you are you seeing the, you know, parks would be taking a lot of on with the bond or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no other way for us to.
All right, I guess. So you're not gonna also be asking the city to contribute?
No. No, uh, I I I think that the 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 land and the concept of it is a is a good contribution for the city. I might ask for the city uh um to uh uh if there are any requirements for like realigning the streets, Eighteenth Street to line up or something like that to help with that. Um, but as far as building a parking lot, uh building um uh the 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 new tennis courts, the new, you know, all of that stuff, I think that that would be something that would be trying to include in the bond.
Okay.
Yeah.
Probably have more later, but.
Yeah, I think thanks for coming. Uh, I, you know, this is definitely a cool concept and I think it's been kicked around for a long time. And um, you know, I'm I'm just wondering if you could summarize a little bit about the public input that you've heard so far and sort of the public's appetite for this for this type of land swap and locations and all that.
Well, we've heard a lot of public input for uh for the pool uh and the site. And we've heard a lot of public impact for the different things. Um, as far as the land swap of Collins Field specifically, for this site specifically, we really have not done that. Um, a lot of public outreach on that. Um, it's getting a little bit into the details. I I think that there are, you know, some some public that would really like the idea and people that have maybe played baseball or own a area of baseball that maybe wouldn't. Um, but we haven't gone out there with this plan that public uh in that way. We wanted to really bring it to you guys first. We don't want to have you guys reading about something in the newspaper or on social media of us going out in the public and saying like, hey, what do you think about us doing this thing with this land that doesn't belong to us?
Yeah, sure. It's been discussed a little bit.
Sure, it's it's been out there a little bit. I, you know, uh, I would, I I've, there's been some feedback from just people that we've uh, most people that we talked to are very positive about this. Uh, but that's just kind of internal conversations that we're having with with community members, but nothing official as far as official public stuff. And it's probably who we're talking to because they're, they see that, you know, uh a good space for for everything there. Yeah.
Yeah. And and yeah, I mean, given, I think, the uh, you know, the location, keeping it where it is, you know, versus moving it to another location. I I'm assuming that, you know, moving it out to West Side, you know, would be less inclusive because it's further away. Or, you know, I, because I know we're moving, the idea is to move some services over there. So, I mean, um, does this this particular location uh you know, if if we're moving those services over there, will those be degraded in any type of way that you could see other, you know, just for it being outside the city?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think that if you look at the one, I think that it is a very underutilized field as far as if if you were to take a look at most fields, um, parks and recreation fields and see how many hours a year that they are rented or have people on them. And you compare that to Collins Field, you will see Collins Field is way underutilized to begin with. Um, but then if you take a look at the users that are using Collins Field right now and you uh uh saw how they got there, most likely they're all drivers. Um, uh, I don't see too many people walking with their bat bat bags down to Collins Field in the in the evenings going there. I don't see kids coming down from the neighborhoods to play uh on the on the field right right there. I mean, I I I park my car right in front of that field every single day for the last seven years. And uh um and especially, you know, during the day, even during the day, during the summer, it's just not uh that used. Sometimes there's a person out there tossing a ball for a dog. Um, but it's 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 not uh uh, it's a pretty underutilized uh baseball field there. I think that we will see a lot more use uh and people served with uh being able to invest in things like a splash pad, a larger community center and a multi-use field. If there's a field that can be used for lacrosse and soccer um and baseball, softball and all of these different sports uh uh year round, I think that you will see a lot more use.
And and I guess my last question uh is around, you know, the the community center, um, you know, splash pad, obviously, sounds sounds great. Definitely see a lot of people bringing kids out to the Dallas to utilize that. I definitely agree that, you know, that that adds equity as well. Be more people. Um, in in terms of the community center, what do you envision in terms of, you know, community center? If there's any bullet points around that, about.
Yeah.
Could be included there.
Uh, you've heard me say it before, multipurpose space is really important. I think that uh, you know, as far as the pool goes, um, uh pools are no longer built like exactly how they are. There's a um, it used to be just rectangles and it was just for competitive swimming. These days, things have changed a little bit. Um, we are still need to have some competitive swimming and we're planning on doing that. But it'd be the same thing that we do a twenty-five by twenty-five, twenty-five yard by twenty-five meter pool um for that side. And then the other side would be kind of reimagined um as far as a more recreation uh pool. Uh, shallow, uh, you know, zero depth entry areas, um, warmer water. So kind of the warm, the warm pool, therapy pool sort of thing, um, probably uh some sort of a lazy river. Um, or uh that sort of thing that can be used uh, you know, for with kids in inner tubes during the day and adults doing water walking, uh uh, you know, at other times of the day. Um, and uh and then some more kind of splash amenities on the inside and such. We see that um those facilities get used a lot more. Um, some facilities that have dedicated uh swim lesson areas that will always continue to be our number one uh um uh mission with that with that pool is uh um getting kids to be able to swim. Um, but being able to have um the space made a little bit more uh for what we need to have there. Also, then looking at the 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 other parts of it there, the locker rooms will be, you know, have some gender friendly uh locker rooms where we have family changing areas and just a little bit more uh uh inclusive. Um, uh, besides just the the traditional men's and women's that we have right now. Um, and uh um then, um, you know, more space for like birthday parties. If you've got a kid in town, you know that there's not many places to have birthday parties and we've got one of the only birthday rooms and it's booked every weekend. So maybe having a couple of rooms there that can be uh have doors that open on one side for a classroom and locked on that for, you know, certain things. If we're doing uh operating classes there, but then being able to be opened up to this, to the pool side if we're doing birthday parties on the weekend. So just a lot more multipurpose space, the stuff that we can, you know, make try and recover some of the revenue on by being able to do birthday parties and things like that, but also be able to use for some more of our programs. Right now, our birthday room is only opens up to the pool. You can't have a class in there because kids, you couldn't be able to step right out on the pool deck. It just doesn't make sense. And so having a building that's that's more like that and then just some open spaces that can have fitness classes, you know, uh yoga, Pilates, um, a bunch of stuff like that, or be turned into a meeting room, um, or a classroom or, you know, theater style or, you know, different things like that. Um, a little bit more of a of of a fitness vibe than just going there to swim. People come to the pool, they just go there to swim. Some, we've got one guy that shows up with his yoga mat every day and there's yoga on the side of the pool. And then uh, you know, getting wet and everything and then goes in, does his laps and everything. But it'd be nice to be able to have a center where people can do those different things or a couple can show up and one can go swimming and the other can go do this other thing. So some things like that, but some of the limitations we have there is if we're doing that, there's just not space for a gym. And I deal with this area as well is that this, the, you know, that the school district is going to need to rebuild a middle school sometime in the future. It's probably twenty years down the road, could be further, but we're long-term thinkers and we're always looking that far down. We're thinking, gosh, how cool would it be if this is more of a community center campus? And so when that happens in twenty years, then we take over the gym and the auditorium there. And uh then that kind of comes into the community center. And looking at the site, moving a little bit further down there, it just makes it even better right there where you've got a crosswalk directly straight across to where the theater is and these things. So you could still have this really cool thing in twenty years from now or thirty years from now here in this the city where you've got all this. But right now, the gym, we don't have a gym. And so if we had some more space, we may be able to put a gym in there too. I can't make promises. I don't know how much it costs. But it gives us the space to be able to 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 have that conversation. Before, when we talked to architects, they were just like, no way, the gym is just not gonna work. Now we could look at doing a gym there as well. So um it also brings it down probably to not three stories anymore to be able to spread out, which will bring down the cost a little bit. The parking lot stuff will definitely increase the costs. Um, and so all in all, uh, it'll be probably more square footage. It will cost some more. We'll have to do the parking and some other things there. But uh uh but I think that it would make a better center. We don't have to wait twenty, twenty-five years before we maybe will get a gym on.
Thanks. That that's a great amount of detail. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mark. That was a great presentation. I appreciate it. Um, one question I have is you, have you talked to uh an engineer about building a parking lot? Where the Serita uh Serita tennis courts are?
I have not. I know that Klein uh 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 Klein Engineering did the original engineering work um when the city hired them to do a study on that lot. Um, and uh um I could probably reach out to them and see uh what they were thinking. I know that that there's, I remember looking at those initial plans and it was taking, tearing up all of Collins Field actually to do drainage across the Collins Field in order to get the water off of that spot right there. Um, I imagine it would be uh similar there. And if we were already going to be building the pool uh on that site, then I think that there uh is a lot uh 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 more kind of um uh uh opportunities and um uh uh things that we could do to make that a little bit cheaper at that point. But uh I've not reached out specifically about what what it would take there. I do know that that area is lower and there'd have to be some grading, some uh some 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 work done with uh.
Yeah, I think I think I would look into that as far as feasibility.
Yeah.
And a cost issue.
Yeah.
It could really affect whether something could go there or not.
Yeah, effective.
Second, I guess, um, do you envision this as like a land swap, right?
Uh, yes, I I think that that will probably, you know, there's lots of different ways that we could do it. But I think that that would make most sense if we were to be investing in a building there. It it could be a long-term lease that we had to or something like that. But I think that uh um uh that it would make sense for us to own the land that the building is on.
One-to-one land swap?
Uh, yes. I I mean, that's, it's it's all owned by the taxpayers.
Sure.
Uh, it's whether or not it's owned by the taxpayers that, uh, you know, it's the same people. So I I don't, I don't see uh um uh um I I I I don't see it being too big of an issue other than uh um, you know, who's in control of the property after that. And it's being used for uh, you know, the the same types of public ser- uh public purposes. So, yeah, I would imagine it to be.
So what do you envision the timing of replacing the ball field?
Uh, replacing the what?
The ball field?
Oh, the ball field. Um, I don't know. Uh, a again, a lot of this stuff is all conceptual. Um, and I would like to see that starting right very soon afterwards. Um, I think that if we were to go without the ball field for a year or two, it would uh not be, i- i- it could be, the all of the uses that are happening at that ball field could be absorbed in other places pretty easily. The the times that the ball field is being used right now, there are other ball fields um in Hood River that are sitting completely empty. So it's not like we're completely at capacity all of the time. Um, they are usually being used in the evenings um at uh, you know, five, six P M on weekday nights during the summer. Um, and uh that's not a a huge time for youth sports during the summer. So I think that 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 I don't, I, you know, I'd like to see it being built around the same time or before. I don't know what the timing of that would look like, but I don't see that to be a too big of a concern.
Might be worth having conversations with the school district. Soon or later about using some of their fields.
Yeah, I mean, if this uh um if we get a a a a feeling of support from the city, like like this, this has legs and it's got merit and let's study it. That's exactly what we're gonna be doing is talking to the engineers and talking to uh the school district and talking to other people and getting out there and trying to figure out uh um what, answer a lot of those questions and see the feasibility of these things.
Yeah, I think I agree with the Counselor Stupina's question about the public. Public opinion on this too. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Tim, I I don't want to interrupt, but I had two kind of follow-ups to some things you said. So we're we're still on your, we're we're still with Tim, but I'm just gonna follow up. Um, just a clarification, and I truly don't know what I think, but I observed that, yes, it's owned by the public. But your constituency and our constituency is not the identical population. There is the city and there is the valley. And so the the those are different things. And I, not that that's the only consideration, but in fact, the the Parks District constituency and the uh city constituency is not identical. So I just wanted to include that point.
Sure.
Um, and and secondly, I do know, and again, not the only thing, but uh one of the fun things I've heard from folks in the softball league is that uh you can drink at Collins Field. And I know that at the school district you can't. So, you know, in terms of vibe and recreation, that's again, not 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 the the only issue, but it's on my mind. Good, uh, back to you, Tim.
It'd be a sad thing if that's what stops this from going forward is that a bunch of adults couldn't drink. But uh, um, you know, the sport that they're playing, but uh
Yeah.
It's uh something to think about and consider.
Back to you, Tim.
Those are the questions I had, uh, Mayor.
Thank you, Tim. Glad.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate you being here tonight and appreciate all the work of Parks and Rec and all of your programs and everything that you're all doing out in the community. I want to echo the sentiment that Paul just made. We have different constituent groups within the city and then, of course, the county. And it does give me a little bit of concern that some of our community members don't have a very detailed picture of what you just painted when Counselor Stupina asked about, you know, what what does the vision look like? And my, I'm concerned because if you're trying to pass this in a bond in May, I think all of us in this room and and of course, others are going to be your biggest champions that are going to relay this information to constituents so that they understand why this is a good return on investment of their dollars if they are going to say yes to this bond. So I want to make sure that I understand your timeline correctly. If we all agree, give it a thumbs up tonight, then the plan is by February, you would have a more detailed vision and plan that you would then bring back to council and I imagine the county. Did I understand that correctly or did I hear that correctly?
I don't, I don't think the county needs to weigh in on this. But uh, but yeah, I think that uh um I could bring back more uh information for the city to uh uh to answer some of these questions that you've been asking.
Would there be some sort of community listening sessions so that the public understands how these dollars will be used? And as I mentioned, the vision that you just painted a couple of minutes ago?
Um, I don't know exactly what the uh um uh what what that will look like. I know that we have done a lot of public outreach, a lot of listening sessions, a lot of surveying and different things like that. Um, I realized that that did not include this vision in it. But uh this is more getting into the details of the specific spot on this site. Um, and so uh uh we can, we 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 can, we can look at some public outreach. I don't know what that public outreach will look like yet.
So help me understand that one a little bit more because I remember there was a survey in English and Spanish that was talking about West Side Park. I don't remember anything specifically around this idea that's being presented right now or a bond.
Yeah, so the West Side Park thing was separate from the funding side. That was when we were trying to decide if we should purchase West Side Park in the first place and what sort of things the community would want us to see out on West Side Park. Um, we got some great information from that. Um, and uh, but it wasn't around uh the 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 funding of uh um of an operation bond and letting.
Okay. You talked about equity earlier on, right? And it's really important that we are seeking input from a variety of community members. And it's really important that we are seeking input from a variety of community members in a variety of languages.
Hmm.
Again, if we are going to be selling this project, it's really important that those listening sessions or those opportunities do happen prior because some of what I've heard is whenever there is a bond, folks don't always understand the specifics and they don't understand if I'm going to get charged more, what, what are these dollars going to be used towards? Now, we already recognize that there's language barriers, there's literacy barriers. And so it's really important that we take the time to just listen to individuals and to listen in their language and to give that feedback or to receive that feedback in the, in a language and in a way that they feel like they comprehend uh, the overall vision. So I would highly encourage that to be intentional within the next couple of months to meet with those community leaders, uh, community partners that do have relationships with constituents, uh, a diverse variety of constituents within the, the city. The other question that I have is around transportation. I love the idea of a center that would offer summer programs, after-school programs. I recognize that there's already a stop, a, a cat stop at the aquatic center.
Hmm.
But if you're going to have more programs, would there, what conversations have taken place with our transportation partners to potentially offer uh, more frequent, frequent routes uh, to the pools uh, if something like this were to come to fruition?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're, we're constantly talking to Kat. And uh, um, and you know, they are a partner of ours. We, we, like you'd mentioned, we do have a stop right outside of our, one of our things. We're looking at it. It's funny sometimes when I look at the posters and just like, oh, right, we're one of them. Cause it's always got like, you're, you're, the places you want to go. And I'm like, that's right, we are it. So uh, um, but uh, but, but absolutely. I mean, a, a lot of that stuff is out of our control. But I think that they know and we're always uh, paying attention to what they're doing and advocating for uh, for, for stuff there. And they have been an outstanding partner um, with uh, um, with always, you know, helping us out with, with some of this stuff. A lot of our things that we've been doing since we took community education on, uh, when it comes to it, a lot of the barriers that we have are transportation barriers.
Right.
They've helped us with uh, um, putting us in line with, with resources to get passes for people and, 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 and different things like that. And uh, um, and so that would definitely continue.
And that, that piece in itself being like moving from one location to the next, it, not that it can't be done or that it'll be difficult for everybody, everyone, but it does give me a little bit of pause of relocating to a geographical location that's even further out because for some folks that, that may be a barrier just to have services not all in one location or one centralized location. Um, I think those are all the questions that I have for now. Some of my peers have already asked some of the other ones I had in mind. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, have one, maybe one more, one, one more. Um, but just, I mean, so logistically, this is a lot of moving pieces. I'm just looking at the map of, have you looked at it? Or what are the reasons why you wouldn't just do like the pool site? The middle school parking and Saruta tennis courts and like use that as, cause that's about the same acreage as what you're looking for at Collins Field. I mean, different configuration, but is there a reason you wouldn't do that? So there's a little, you know, there's only two moving pieces instead of seven or?
Um, I guess then it would be uh, having to redo the parking lot then uh, um, uh, over there on the other site on uh, um, uh, on the site where the, the pool is. I, I really hadn't considered that much. I really like the idea of the um, the community center being right on the edge of Jackson Park without something in between the two of them. Um, but uh, um, I suppose that's something that, that, that we could look at and study. Uh, it does, I don't know how much, I'd have to play around with that a little bit and, and see the possibilities of that if, if that was something that we were doing. But that's one that we haven't, haven't been talking about. There are some ideas that we've talked about with like the Friendship Park is one that's just kind of the oddball up on the hill right there. It's, it's fairly underutilized, uh, but it's a great little piece of land. But uh, it's just such a weird corner right there. We had talked about, you know, could tennis courts ever go up there? Uh, it's, it's up there right where the wind's blowing across. It just didn't really make sense for, for that uh, um, uh, in, in our eyes, but um, there's, there are, you know, we've, we've kicked around ideas on that, but it's not, you know, we've even talked about like, you know, just what, what's, what, what is, how does Friendship Park fit in though? And I'm just not sure. Yeah.
You mentioned incorporating a gym and other various facilities in this, um, and taking a lot of that need uh, oh, out of the middle school, moving that or incorporate with them. Have you approached the education district on that partnership and doing some of the stuff that they probably do now over there at, at this new facility?
Um, no, uh, when you said the education district, the school district or yeah, uh, no, um, we uh, um, I think that, so I mean, we're, we're in constant communications with the school district because we do not have any spaces. So we use all of their spaces for uh, um, uh, for all of our community ed programs and all, all of our recreation programs. Um, I think that they are, would very much like us to have our own space because it, it, it is a, um, it's tricky sharing. Um, and uh, um, and, and we are uh, always trying to figure out how we can fill those buildings after hours. Um, and um, you know, there's, there's lots of, you know, all the tools, all the schools are ran by different principals that all uh, have their ideas on things. And then sometimes we've got stuff scheduled and we find out that there's a concert in there that night. Does the school district and put it on the schedule? There's a lot of different things there. So I think having something on our own spot uh, would, would make sense. And I'm, I'm sure that they support that. Um, but I think there's also some synergy and some things that we could do with them uh, uh, for, where they could use the gym for certain parts and you could do some swap. We work really well with the school district on that if they need to be able to come over and use it during the day at some point. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just curious about one way to mitigate uh, operational costs.
Yeah.
Long term. Uh, related to that, um, hypothetically, let's say this bond passes.
Hmm.
And then five years later, the levy comes up and doesn't pass.
Hmm.
You have a contingency, contingency plan in place?
Yeah, I mean, that is a very tough thing and that's, that's why we did not want to do a bond and levy. We wanted to form uh, the Parks District at a larger rate and borrow against that. But that wasn't a, a, um, uh, some of the county uh, was, uh, it agreed, it was, it, it agreed with us on. So uh, so this is the way that we have to do it. Um, our idea is hopefully we can build all of this stuff. We can do a great job of showing the community that we are uh, uh, good resources of their, uh, of their dollars and that we can go out and get this to be a permanent rate later on. Um, if it doesn't pass, it's just the same thing as when the school district goes out and puts theirs out. There's pass over and over because we, they're all saying it's not going to increase your taxes. They've got a good message there. But if it didn't, and that has happened in other places in the state before, then it is um, usually trying to figure out what sort of things that you cut and, and don't do anymore. And so uh, um, I don't see this happening, but I've, I've seen in, in other states and other jurisdictions when uh, um, when the economy went down and all their stuff, that they've actually had to close centers and close buildings. I would hate to see that happen, but that's, that's unfortunately where we're going to have to um, be while we're doing that, that, the, the lobby things for a while.
Sure. I'm curious about ways to mitigate downside risk.
Yeah.
Especially if you're, either this or one of this is operational. Thanks.
Yeah.
Anything else for Mark at this time? The next step is uh, we can talk about this some now. We could uh, postpone our, our deliberation about it. But what's your pleasure, people? So.
Uh, I, I think a little, little deliberation probably is in order for everybody else to say.
Anybody opposed to that? Great. You want to, you have some things to say to start or?
Yeah, excuse me. So Gladys and Tim about to hear that and public. Uh, you know, I, I mean, looking at this, I'm, I'm generally in favor of this plan. I, I, I think, you know, a lot of what we labor over with it is, you know, that public safety facility and what, what would that look like? Is that a great spot for it? I, I, I'm trying to disassociate that a little bit from at least the way that I'm thinking about this because we're not exactly in the same timeframe and we wouldn't be building a public safety facility, uh, police station at the same time that you're rebuilding a pool, you know, um, at least uh, in, as, as we're thinking about this now. It is, it is a priority for us, but it's not uh, one of the main priorities in the work plan. Um, so I'm trying to think about it a, a little bit in terms of, of that not being part of it. But you know, maybe something for the city to do there, that's maybe not a public safety facility. Um, you know, seeing other communities that have, you know, this type of community center that have splash pads, et cetera. You know, I've definitely been to places in Portland on the west side uh, that have, you know, more uh, u- uh, updated types of facilities, uh, places like the Shark and Sun River, et cetera. Um, I think it brings in a lot of revenue from, you know, the tourism community as well, not just, not to mention the, the people here. But you know, having young kids, I do recognize there's very limited space. Uh, I've definitely been to um, birthday parties in the small room there many times uh, in the, the last few years. Um, and, and I think, you know, maximization of, you know, the, the, the use of, if, if this is a good space for that, we could build more there. I'm generally in favor of that idea. I like that it's next to Jackson Park. I like that it's, um, the additional parking is ta- taking up, you know, uh, uh, facilities that we can't use because of, you know, the, the way they've been built for without spending a lot of money. So, um, you know, while, while saying all that, I do recognize that, you know, we do have a different constituency. Um, you know, and some of the things that we talked about earlier. Uh, I do recognize that the, you know, the use of the ball field is, is somewhat limited and that it's, you know, I played Babe Ruth League when I was a kid and I remember going to ninety feet and all that. It's, it's not something a lot of people can use, but I do recognize that that softball community has gotten larger and larger and um, it's, it's been pretty popular as well. So I mean, I'll, I'll just say, you know, similar to what Council Rivera was saying earlier, you know, I'd like to see, you know, obviously the development uh, of what the messaging is going to be in the education of the public to get to, you know, ensure that we're going to see a successful bond. But I'll just say that I'm generally in favor of, of the direction of this and where it's going. And I would li- like to see, uh, you know, come February, what, what that messaging would be and that, that would be uh, a lot. It, it would, it would take me a lot further into, you know, putting full stock into this, but generally in favor of the idea. I think that's what you're looking for today. Um, for, for me personally.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, it'll be convoluted, but I, it's just that there is a lot to the concept. So, um, I, I, I like the idea of, you know, uh, that, that we'd actually be creative and not stuck in just this is what was already there. Obviously, the larger community center would be great for the community, including our constituents. Um, I do just, you know, especially given the timeline of when you want a pretty strong idea we're definitely in. And then like an, an actual like, okay, we have site. You know, that we know we're going to have the site to design to it like that is for government and incredibly short timeline. And there are a lot of moving pieces to the proposal. So I do one that just makes me nervous. Um, and, and it feels hard to actually feel like we'll pull it off. But and then I think there's just the bigger ones and I don't know how to answer them of, um, you know, this, this does mean that like the city loses quite a bit of acreage compared to what we'd be gaining if we're doing swapping of land between the different proposed swaps. Um, and, and you know, yes, it's all for recreation and it's all for public use. But to the point of, you know, the city does have different constituents and occasionally some different goals even within recreation. Like, I don't know how to decide if that's worth it or not, um, at least tonight. I need to maul on that. But, but that is a concern out there. Um, I think this is one, and maybe this is for staff. Again, I don't know how to answer it of, you know, if we'd be looking at the current pool site is, is to be ours, would it actually work for a public safety facility? Or especially depending on how, you know, the seventeenth, eighteenth T S P goes, is it a usable site for anything? Or is it actually just we, we get a lemon and you get a great recreation site? And maybe that's worth it for the community, but I don't know how to answer that. Um, and then even, yeah, I think just logistically from our end costs of, um, how much land are we donating and what does that mean? Or how much off-site improvement would be waiting and what would that mean? Um, it, somewhere in this mix of I want to, I want to be creative, I want to be community-minded. And also it is our responsibility to make sure we're protecting city assets long-term. And I don't have, I don't even have the questions tonight, but I don't, certainly don't have the answers of how do we decide this is in the benefit of not just the larger community, and I think it is, but like also in the benefit of city residents and. So that's my, those are my questions.
Is it going to get convoluted soon?
Yeah.
Great. For taking trouble, um, I, I would like more information before I just, oh yeah, this is great. Or, uh, I'm not opposed to the idea and the concept of it. Uh, I, I would like to know a little more about if Collins Field is moved somewhere, uh, where it's moved to, uh, what that use is. What, what are we giving up? Uh, if, if, if the field's moved to another space and that space is then used for Collins Field or baseball exclusive use, what's given up in that space? For example, if it's moved over to the West Side Park, uh, according to the drawing, you have one open green field there. If that's entirely used up as baseball field, then it can't be used for anything else.
Hmm.
So just balancing those needs uh, uh, between the various communities throughout. I think that, um, having this kind of facility uh, is a benefit to do, to benefit to all constituencies. So not just yours, not just our, all of them. Uh, I, I remember the, but if, if, if we do this land swap, what we, the city council chooses to do with where it's denoted as a public safety facility, that's up to us to figure out. Uh, I remember in our own analysis prior to my time, uh, that was the second highest rated location for this facility in, in that exact spot. Uh, so it's not an idea that hasn't been explored before. Uh, and then beyond, beyond those concerns, just the long-term operational sustainability of everyone.
Hmm.
Uh, that, that's my impression of it. Generally, uh, not against. And certainly for.
I'm going to jump in here. Um, Megan mentioned the idea of what, what have we left with? Uh, the, the, the note I made to myself was get sort of the runt parcel that I'm not exactly sure what would be a fantastic use of that corner parcel where the pool is now that, uh, that just, you know, we, we, the city, if, if I'm thinking small-mindedly, we, the city would end up with a, you know, like not that great of a thing. And I really appreciate this conversation because during the course of this conversation, I started to have a different idea, which is, dear residents of the city, great news, you're going to get an awesome pool. We, the city don't own it, but who cares? The folks don't care. It's public use. And so the fact that you guys are going out to potentially bring, you know, like sixty million dollars to the public good, that's a pretty good leverage for the city. If we toss in a piece of land and you guys put fantastic programming on it, that's a huge win for us. Um, so that, that in ter- in, in terms of, uh, we, we would put some skin in the game, but the residents would get a huge payback from that. So as a proud tax spend progressive, that's a win. So I hadn't had that thought before tonight. I was just more thinking about it. Is this good for the city? It's as opposed to, does this provide great uh, resources for our residents? Um, and then I, I just sort of, then the other side of my brain chimes in and says, not one single person came and said, Paul, I'm so glad you're running for mayor because you know, what we really need is less baseball and more. Like not one person said that. So in terms of our goals, like this isn't exactly what we thought we were here to do. But collaborating with a really well-organized, energetic partner is, is smart pools. That's the wrong thing. Smart is smart money. So uh, those, 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 those are my thoughts. It's, it's, it's a really exciting visionary idea. And just, uh, that, as we've all said, there's a lot of, lot of parts to. Uh, go ahead. Tim Glass?
Well, John Ben. Um, I agree that it's a conceptually appealing. However, I agree with Megan that the reality is, is we're trading three point seven acres for one point three.
Yeah.
Because I would feel a lot more enthusiastic about giving it a thumbs up. If I, if I knew I had some inkling that the public was strongly supported the idea. And I just don't see that we have that, uh, that consensus right now. So I'm not exactly sure how to make an enthusiastic thumbs up at this point. how to make an enthusiastic thumbs up at this point.
Thank you. Glad to send you final thoughts.
Thank you. Uh, similar concerns to Council Cunahan. I think it's a generally, I am in favor of this. I think it would be a great benefit for our community to have a more centralized location for a variety of events that take place. You know, I had my kiddos in soccer and there were so many parents that were parked alongside of the roads that, you know, I know that folks were parking in the school's parking lot or in the in the lawn and remember getting an email of like, hey, you guys can't park here. And so we definitely need space, right? Right? We need something like this in our community. My concern is that it's not specific enough. It's not, you know, I don't really understand the timeline all that great in order to be able to sell this to constituents, because we're the ones that are going to be selling this to our constituents to vote yes for this. And so that piece gives me concern or a little pause. I think we would definitely have to have the conversation of what, if we were going to land swap, what would we do with that land ourselves? I know that we've had several conversations over a justice center and I think we, we definitely need to have more in detail conversations. The last evaluation that took place was a couple of years ago. And as we all know, the costs of everything have increased. So just being really intentional of are, are we ready to move those efforts forward as well? And if so, could we potentially add space for our staff as well, uh, like city staff, right? Having Abigail and the whole team moving up to the heights as opposed to being downtown. So I think some of the conversations still need to take place at this time generally in favor, but I don't think I have a clear vision of what to sell to constituents between now and February.
On, on that point, God, uh, that spurred a further thought similar to a previous train of thought I was having that I was the one who said the constituencies aren't exactly identical. Now, another way to say that is, hey, city residents, the whole county, the whole heart river, the parks and rec constituents are going to build the pool in your city. So again, like we don't own it, but it's in our city. It's not like you're coming to say, hey, hey, Paul, give money to build a pool and park it out. It's like the opposite. Folks up there are being asked to fund a thing that's walking distance from my house. Like that's a great win for the city. Again, we don't own it, but it serves us. So in terms of our constituents, I think that's a real asset of this plan.
However, I think that the majority of the funding probably will come from city residents when we're dealing.
Certainly disproportionately from city because of land values and whatnot. I don't, I don't, I don't know about majority, but yes, of course.
And the maintenance piece, like the maintenance, right? Who's going to maintain it?
The Parks and Rec District. I think I know that.
Yes.
Like that's, that, that's on their budget, right? So that's again, great for us.
So we currently are the ones that maintain Collins Field. As of now, right? So I think just being very clear, like moving forward, that's all you guys being very specific about what we're maintaining versus what we're not, so that we have those talking points are able to speak to that to our direct constituents.
Right.
And just being clear of like, here, here's what your dollars will go to. Here's what your dollars won't go towards too, because folks will have those similar questions. I don't think that there's been enough community education and I would love to see more taking place between now and February and then after February, because it's a short timeline in order to really sell this vision to folks.
Anything else on this topic, y'all?
Um, this is for you, Mark. Can you send, I guess I don't actually understand the multi-use field where you could play both soccer or and baseball. Um, that doesn't make any sense to me. So can you send some like examples or like?
There are tons of examples. I mean, if you, uh, I, I, I will send you some of the best ones, but also if you just Google multi-sports recreation field, you'll see that they did interlay them. Oftentimes it's a large field that has two softball fields that are both playing like kind of toward each other. You can put out these temporary fences and you can put out a temporary, uh, 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 pitching mounds and different things like that. I worked for the city of Redmond for seven years and we had nine turf fields. They were all turf and there was all these multi-sports fields with different sports on them. And they are absolutely outstanding for being able to get the most amount of use year round out of them.
Okay. Well, yeah. So something to just help understand that like we wouldn't be losing. I like right now. It just feels like you're like, oh, it's a soccer field and you know, get screwed cons, but yeah, so that'll be great.
I'd, I'd love to do that. And I heard, I think, right? I heard you say something about, oh, uh, moving a baseball field to another location. And then I just wanted to clarify there that we are not planning on moving specifically just the baseball field. It would be, we're going to be building a multi-sport field that you could play baseball on, but other things as well.
Yeah. Since one of that question was also around, uh, using space for a monopolized use like a baseball diamond and not, not being able for be used for any other purpose.
Thank you. Two hands. Uh, Salas.
Uh, thank you. I think that Counselor Saunders made that last comment about like an image or a visual. I mean, something like that to be able for us to have. Again, if we're selling this to constituents, what's the good, what's their return on investment? Here's what you're going to get. Here's what it's going to potentially look like so that they truly understand and buy into this.
Yeah, I just wanna, I guess I recall that we did a feasibility study on the feasibility of putting the police facility in different locations. And one of them was the, the pool site. My recollection is that it ranked behind. So I think we might want to dig that up and revisit that just for reference. Cause he actually went through like a ranking process of different sites.
That's a good idea. I, I also would like to see like, oh yeah, what, what, how, how good a spot was that independent of this other project?
Exactly. Well, one of the major drawbacks was is that we didn't own it.
I'm sorry, I missed that. The drawback was.
But they didn't own.
We didn't own it.
Thank you.
And also, um, yeah, I guess that's, that's my, that was my thought.
Thank you. Are we done? I think we might be done with this. Thank you. Thank you. For, for this elected official, it matters a lot that you guys took the time to come, even though you were, uh, uh, disciplinedly mom. It was great. Thank you for coming. Really appreciate. Okay, that takes us to our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I would move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second, second by grant. Uh, deliberation, uh, discussion. On, on. Chair votes by motion pass. I'm so excited. We're going to have Spanish language one-on-one. Uh, septic dumping. Mr. Adam.
I'm excited.
Everybody laugh.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, Adam Schmidt, interim public inspector. Uh, tonight's discussion that I bring you is about adopting an RV septic dumping fee. Um, you'll find the cover sheet on page twenty of your packet. I'll give you a little background on, uh, septic dumping at the treatment plant. Uh, in nineteen seventy-three, uh, they allowed, they began to allow RV dumping. Uh, they dumped in the same area that, uh, septic dumpers uh, dumped at the plant. And then in two thousand, when the plant was upgraded, um, they, uh, they developed a standalone facility, um, designated just for RV dumping with, um, uh, the ability to fill up with fresh water as well. Uh, there's a non-podable water at the dump site, uh, to do rinse down. And then there's a fresh water right outside of it. Uh, currently based on wastewater treatment plant, uh, personnel, uh, on a busy day, uh, during work hours, there's roughly twenty RVs that dump in the summertime, uh, and this is just during, uh, work hours. So, um, the RV dump station is open uh, twenty-four hours right now. So, um, probably significantly more in the evenings. I know Louis had mentioned that, uh, in the evenings they've come in at eleven PM for callouts and there's been people there dumping. So, uh, quite a bit of use down there. Um, uh, we have reached out, uh, Robin Chambers, uh, reached out to Cal A, uh, had a discussion with them about uh, using a, uh, the same Cal A meters that we currently use for parking meters, um, and then, um, just changing the interface uh, for RV dumping on it. So we had purchased, uh, two of those Cal A's, um, through the port, um, that they had left over from their, their parking programs they had downtown. Uh, so staff recommendation would be to adopt resolution uh, two zero two three dash one five implementing a septic dumping fee of ten dollars per time for our all non-commercial dumping.
Can I add one comment? Uh, Adam's comments of just when we looked around for what would be an appropriate fee, ten dollars really was a very universal charge for um, most places, I think in the area. And then I also asked, uh, city managers around the state and got ten dollars to seem to be the universal fee.
Especially with freshwater, the option to fill with freshwater. So.
I have a question about behavioral economics. I don't know that much about exactly exactly how this works, but I think in general, I understand what we're doing is we're, you know, moving sewage. It seems to me like the biggest cost savings of this function is that it's not staff intensive. Like if, if your folks were to show up on Sunday morning and there was a big mess because somebody had dumped their sewage in a very uh, careless way. I mean, what a mess. Like that would be so much work to clean that up. Is there any danger that because it's free, people are careful while doing it and they say, well, I paid my ten bucks. The heck with it. I'm just going to slop. Like, is there any danger we're shooting ourselves in the foot by charging really a tiny amount? And it's going to result in more staff maintenance supervising babysitting headaches?
I, I have a travel trailer myself and I'm trying to think if I dumped it and made a mess and then I had to walk through it to clean up my hose and area, I just have a hard time.
So the user has an incentive to be tidy as well.
Yes, for sure.
For selfish reasons.
Yeah, yeah. There's just like a low spot in the, in the concrete. So it, even if you have a spill, it still filters down. And you could have a little leftover, but again, there is, you know, the option with the hose there to wash down. So I mean, it could potentially, you could potentially get some disgruntled dumpers that I just don't see like you dump and then you're like, oh man, now I gotta walk through the mess I just made.
Cause the ten bucks is never going to add up to anything for us. I mean, it's not, it's not real money, but the maintenance is real money. So.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I guess it sounds like most places are charging ten. So like, how many people are disgruntled to go, oh darn, I have to do what I do everywhere else.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, we're not, we're not out of line. It sounds like.
Yeah.
Uh, so I have heard it said before that there's a lot of, you know, uh, shadow communications about, hell, this place is free and you should go here. I would imagine that this would disincentivize people to come to the site as much. Is there a local, uh, free site that's within the, you know, a hundred and twenty miles, let's say, where where, where, uh, you know, people are starting going there and that's going to be overutilized or, you know, any, any, any blowback?
So after a conversation with both Jacobs and Windsor, I, there are no, uh, dumping sites in the gorge. The only one is across the river in, um, Stevenson, that is the only, and that, that's a fee dump site as well, but it isn't Stevenson. So.
There's not a lot of incentive to open one up. Like nobody's gonna be like, oh, my son's job. I'm gonna start like this. This is, this is just one of those like burdens that we're, we're shouldering, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I think a lot of it, uh, is, uh, the location is very convenient.
Very convenient and free.
Very convenient and free. So.
This is a motion thing, right?
Uh, I mean, I'm on board with making a motion. So I move that city council adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, adopting a general public, non-commercial septic dumping fee to be included in the consolidated schedule of fees, rates and charges for all general public.
Second by, second by God, thank you. Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Vote. Chair votes by motion pass. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Take care. Murals.
Hello, Jackie Vanapoy, Community Engagement Coordinator. Um, I'm here to continue the discussion that we had a few months ago, um, regarding mural code here in the city. Um, and at the end of the last conversation, there was some movement forward of looking towards Portland as an example, but also interest in exploring options for community engagement. Um, and so what we did is we met with, um, we established a mural advisory group and this consisted of muralists, art educators, building owners, um, architects, historians, representatives from landmarks review board. We're all invited to attend. Um, and you know, and to see, we kind of ran through the Portland code with them as well as, uh, uh, Cove from the city of Milwaukee as well. And kind of explored some of the things that they do and see what we thought would fit well in the city of Head River and what maybe didn't fit as well. And so in the packet, I kind of outlined in terms of time, manner and place, some of the things that we were hearing back. Um, one of I think the biggest conversations that we were hearing revolved around the downtown district being a historic district. Um, and from the get-go, we were really also acknowledging that we wanted to discuss murals in the historic district with the landmarks review board. That was already something we were planning on doing, but through our mural advisory group, um, that was reinforced. Um, and so what we were hearing from them, um, is that yes, there, there's an appreciation for murals and for public art, um, in general. However, that, you know, the downtown historic district and historic buildings were not really the place for them. And that was pretty unanimous, uh, throughout the landmarks review board, especially considering, um, the lack of ability to regulate murals. And I think that that was one of the biggest concerns that we heard from the mural advisor groups as well as from the landmarks review board is that in light of looking to establish time, manner and place regulations and not a public um, art program that would fund and be able to, you know, have a say in what was, you know, how the mural would look or what the content of the mural would be without being able to regulate content. Um, the recommendations we received from both groups were to be fairly, were to be more restrictive, um, especially at the beginning, thinking of things like side streets and alleys, looking towards like the heights, especially with everything going on with the height streets gates. You know, there are some alleys there that could be a great place to, you know, have like a, uh, you know, like a mural, like a place that people go to there to like walk through and explore the murals there. Um, you know, commercial and industrial uh, zones were recognized as, you know, good places for murals, retaining walls as well. Um, and with that being said, we're now at a point looking at what, you know, how should we move forward with drafting the code? Um, what aspects of the community feedback and, um, recommendations from the landmarks review board do you think should be incorporated into the code for murals? Again, looking towards Portland as an example, because it's been heavily litigated. So with that, turn it over.
Thank you, Jackie. I will, uh, start off by saying I'm a little bit reluctant about this topic every time it comes up because first amendment issues are just like so fun to talk. We can talk about this for hours and it would be a valuable philosophical, interesting conversation. I see that Dan has even turned his camera. And so, you know, the, just, just, let's, let's try to be, uh, economic with our words and, you know, like, but what about, like, you could, but what about for a really, really long time on this? So, uh, I, I also understand you, you are, you are not looking for a motion tonight. But you want some guidance. Where are we, Abigail, on this?
That's correct. We are looking for some direction for you of what you'd like to see in a code that then we could prepare that and bring that back to you for consideration in our formal action. So I think, um, a couple of things are, you know, one, do you want to have a mural code? Do you want to regulate? That's the first question. And then if so, I think Jackie can probably walk you through, you know, um, some time, place, manner, size questions for, you know, what you where you're leaning. And then we can take that back and bring you a, a product to, you know, approve or deny.
Question. And if I'm wandering off, bring me in. There's mural, thank you. There's, there's, there's having a mural code and there's having murals. And there's having murals. Is a code more likely to get us murals? Is an absence of a code a deterrent? Or is it important that we have a code to prevent there being murals that we don't want?
That's probably a legal question. I'm looking to Dan, although I will say that is. That is uh my motivation in putting this on your work plan this year was the absence of mural code may allow for the wild west of. Anything being allowed. So if you wanted restrictions, it's good to have them up front. Dan, do you have input on that?
Right now in Hood River did have a major uh litigation battle years ago before my time over billboards. Along the freeway and eventually the city won that. Uh and the way, the reason you don't have murals is because of their size. Um it it kind of falls in the size category of billboards which aren't allowed, so. Um the any billboard you have would have been, would be non-conforming, surviving from the time before that litigation occurred. Um that's why you don't have murals and and I would disagree with um Lit Lockwar's uh comments that you have ample. Uh tools to prevent uh obscenity or uh hate speech. That sounds very content laden to me and I would suggest that you really don't have uh uh the ability to regulate. Any aspect of content, you can regulate the sizeness, the location, some time, place, manner. Of these things.
Thank you, thank you, Dan. So look, look. Go ahead.
Sorry, just following up on that, Dan, cause I don't have our code memorized, but um. So so currently we've got some sort of rules that says a a sign slash billboard can't be over whatever size. And therefore, any, any painting on a wall, even if it didn't have words, would fall under that category and be considered a sign slash billboard?
Right, so words have nothing to do with it. One of the cases that Portland litigated was, can't we just allow kind of symbols or artsy things? No, words, that's not part of it. It's the size, the dimensions of the face of the thing. Um whether the thing is a a billboard on the freeway or a um uh. Uh vinyl uh plastic rollout sheet or a layer of paint on the building. That's the sign. That's the billboard.
Okay, so right, and I don't know the size again, but if someone painted a six by ten. Whatever. We we would then go and say, oh, that's too big to be a sign. You need to remove it or make it smaller or. Get a sign permit or whatever the current code requires.
You can regulate the size of the thing.
Okay.
That's the easiest way to do it. And, yeah.
So let me see if we can bite off this chunk and maybe this will be unsuccessful. I heard something to the effect of downtown is historic and beautiful and murals would mess that up. This is someone's opinion. Do, does our council agree with that? Or is our council, is is council inclined to say? Yeah, no murals in the historic downtown.
I I don't agree with uh that, that I don't agree with Elijah, but just because something old, uh it's unchangeable.
Don't tend to agree uh with with Grant just said, um. You know, having lived in very old places across the pond where public art is. Round buildings that are much, much, much older than the buildings here, that's like by saying, you know, it's been here a certain amount of time. I I think it can be. A way to honor, you know, the how Hood River's grown and, you know, put some, again, real issues, you know, I don't, I don't wanna like say, let's tuck all of our public art and. On retaining walls in the commercial districts. I think that's, that's, you know, against the point of public art.
Thank you.
If I, part of the point, part of the issue.
Go ahead, Tim, sorry.
Part of the issue is. What, what is? What is the nature of a historic district? And will murals alter the nature of the historic district? Right, I I don't know. The answer to that question. Maybe Dan does, I don't know.
Um, it depends. Well, historic districts have to be listed according to their nomination narrative. And so usually it's for very specific historic reasons. And there's very stringent uh design criteria that apply. Um so it depends on the the nomination documentation upon it which this district was listed. Um and I think size would matter. It would be, certainly it's a legitimate and legally defensible basis for. Regulating, restricting or prohibiting signs. The fact whether they're in or out of the historic district for sure, time, place, manner. So that would be the place part of it.
Right.
Um, can I add something? Um, so another aspect of the conversation of the historic district was, you know. If council is interested in moving forward with allowing murals in the historic district, uh what, you know, what sort of. Restrictions would you like to see? And landmarks review suggested no murals on Oak Street within the historic district. So that sort of prime um Main Street. Um and there was a lot of discussion around um contributing versus non-contributing buildings. Uh so there are newer buildings within the historic district that are not historic. Um and they're, you know, and so. Overall, uh the murals advisory group was sort of playing around with allowing murals on um. Non-contributing structures. Uh but not on contributing structures, whereas landmarks was kind of. More focused on, you know, it's the entire district and what, just because. That building is not, um you know, actually a historic structure doesn't mean that it's not part of it and doesn't also follow similar guidelines. So I just wanna share some of the conversations that we were having as well. Um. Yeah, and some additional distinctions within the district.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you.
So I uh I'm gonna be different than Grant and Doug on this and um. I mean, I'm I'm thinking about, you know, we've put the last few months have been like all this heartache about uh the curves might be different in the historic district. And. You know, now we're talking about murals and obviously, you know, and this is the thing, the same content thing of like, there can be incredible murals that really add to the vitality and and wonderfulness of the historic district. Or it could be the most offensive thing we can all think of. Um and it may be different for all of us. But like if if we're, we have this as far as the district, it was created to preserve a certain. And I wasn't around for the thing, so like created to preserve a certain feel or look or or vibe or or whatever. Um and and we've obviously spent a lot of time and energy protecting it as a community. We have a, we have a whole landmarks review board designed to be protecting that. Um one, I wanna take their opinion into consideration. Um cause that is what they're doing more than we spend any time doing, but I also think. Given what we've seen from some of the community about how much this can be. An absolute mess if someone thinks you're messing with the historic district, like I don't, I'm very disinclined to. Open that up to, uh you know, as much as there is value in public art as a general thing, like I don't. I don't wanna do that in the historic district.
Tim?
Yeah, I agree with uh. Or I agree with Megan. I also agree with Doug. Um. I think murals can add a lot. To a community. But. Given our lack of ability to regulate. Content. I think it's just, uh, I don't think it's worth. Um wanting it in the downtown historic district.
Doug?
It just seems like. Complicated. And risky.
Thank you, Jim.
But I I I think so far, you know, obviously conversations have dominated by historic districts, um, you know, um. It it's. I- is it fair to say, Dan, that we, you know, if if the conversation went there, we're not able to really. Say we can't do this here and we can do this here, or I I'm, you know, how?
Yes, you can, you can regulate based on location. You could have different. Sign and mural regulations in the historic district versus outside. And if you look at your current uh sign code. Um which again, this isn't land use, uh so uh I wanna make that clear. Uh it's chapter eighteen point oh two and it's um. You know, they talked about different kinds of zones as appropriate for this and that type of sign, but that doesn't make it a land, set of land use regulations. Um but also, and 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 I I've. Share your experience in the view of other countries, especially in Europe where there are many old, old areas. They, like, they don't have the Second Amendment that we have to deal with. They don't have the First Amendment that we have to deal with. They can regulate content. In other countries.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah, um. Okay, so yeah, that that that's the the question I was actually trying to get at is what you said, which is you can have different rules, you know, sign is X. Size here versus.
Uh new size.
Yeah.
New size and location, okay.
Thank you.
And outside of the historic district, that was one recommendation we heard from the advisory group was um in terms of size. Potentially concerning the more lenient or a larger size in industrial zones. Um so larger percentage of the wall space versus in commercial zones, keeping it maybe a little bit more restrictive, like. Fifty percent dish around there. Of a given wall space.
For what it's worth, I'm in favor of restricting murals in the historic districts. Gladys, you gotta chime in on this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm hearing all, yes. I think it would be important to have rules around the contributing district or the zone versus the non-contributing buildings. Uh recognizing that. You know, there's a reason why the landmarks review board is here and wanna honor and value their opinion, but it also sounds like this conversation took place. Within the groups that Jackie interviewed and that there was general consensus of, yes, let's support murals, but let's be really restrictive in certain areas. At least that's what I'm hearing over here and I'd be happy to to support that and. Let's make a decision and move these efforts forward so that we can talk about many other things that we wanna get off this work plan.
All right, so we may, by my counting, we may have four votes for. Being pretty restrictive in the downtown area. I think, I think that Tim, Gladys, Paul and Megan would vote for quite restrictive in the downtown area. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Can you clarify restrictive or not allowed? Because.
That's what I'm for.
Like, yes, we certainly have. M- more restrictive versus open-ended, but. I would go further than restrictive.
Say it.
I would, I would go, it's not allowed in the historic.
Okay, one vote for not allowed in historic district. How many hands on that?
Me too.
Gladys, you got a hand on that?
No, just because something's always been the way it is, doesn't mean that it always has to be that way.
We we do not have four votes for Megan's suggestion.
Yes, I I understand if uh we will place different restrictions on the historic area of town. We also have a list of historic buildings already in place in the city. Uh if we wanna incorporate that list into this list of restrictions, that would make sense and understandable. That that list is the list of contributing buildings, as far as I understand. Um, I I'm of the perspective that uh. I'm not afraid of art, uh nor I am I afraid of the expression therein. Anywhere. I I understand the hesitancy to allow that sort of thing and I understand the fear behind it. Um, that's just where I'm at. Um, but I understand the desire to also keep part of the downtown, especially Oak Street. Um. Historic in nature.
What about no murals on contributing buildings? How many hands for that?
But the contributing buildings would be considered Oak Street, right? Like, that's what I thought I heard. That is that considered the contributing district?
Um, so the list that Grant was referring to, the, that's a list of the contributing buildings. Um but the Oak Street, I I I wouldn't be able to tell you if like every single building on Oak Street is part of that. I don't think that it is. Um so that's a separate issue. Um and then there's also contributing buildings. Not on Oak Street, on the Main Street there. So I think those are two different things. So you can say only not on contributing. Buildings, uh not on Main Street and not on contributing buildings, or you could say just not on Main Street. You know.
Yeah, I I I mean, I think for me, you know, obvious.
Glad it, I think.
Oh, class.
I realize I didn't hit uh the mute button, my bad. So. No murals on Oak Street. No murals on contributing buildings. That's, that's what I just heard. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Or those are options.
Those are some different options. We're looking for what people support. Doug?
So yeah, I mean, I I I I wouldn't support outright banning it downtown, but Oak Street contributing buildings. Right, um I'm I'm a little bit more amicable to that.
Okay, we got, we got, we got a proposal here. No murals on Oak Street or contributing buildings. How many hands on that?
I have a question, um, before, raise hands on that. Uh Oak Street, how far?
Just within the district.
Which is.
I believe it's first to sixth or seventh, I think.
I'm gonna call him the planning director to come give a little information.
Remember, First Amendment justice is very quick.
Got this. Second century, they can area based on one particular street.
Geographic area is defined in the code from Front Street to approximately sixth or seventh. From the rail road tracks, depending on where on sixth and seventh you are, it it jogs and then. Uh there would be a sort of a peninsula that went to. Uh the Wacom Center. Built in nineteen thirty-seven, home of the former, you may, you may know it as the Century building. Institute and or Forest Service.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, got it, thank you.
That would be the end of the line.
Yeah, so Oak Street between Front and six, seven.
Yes, six, seven.
Definitely.
All right, so we we were looking for four votes. I think Gladys voted, I think Doug voted. We had a question. And, and voting?
Uh that's more restrictive. I, if we can't ban that rate, obviously that's better than nothing, so.
So Megan supports that. Right, I think we have four votes for that.
Um, were there any other thoughts on some of the other feedback we received that were outlined in the? Packet? Did you wanna review any of that? Um or should we incorporate this feedback?
Uh I'm Jen, uh from the packets one, I'm generally in favor of them being allowed in all commercial and industrial areas. Um, I don't know if we necessarily need a size restriction, but I understand we get the same billboard question. Um, a question, question for Dan. If we allow uh though that size of thing, uh users can do print logos, whatever they want on them, correct?
Yes, you cannot regulate by content, only the overall dimensions, size, area.
I just wanted to check about uh the the potential of commercialization on those, just for clarification.
If I, if I may also comment when you just said print on it, be clear, like in materials, you can regulate, right? You could say it has to be paint, it can't be vinyl.
Yeah.
Like, so. Yeah, that also impacted your thoughts.
Yes, uh so getting, getting to that, um that those, that's the place, um, excluding historical buildings. Uh timeframe, uh minimum two years, just for it's more vested. Who want to do a max of? Something or ten or whatever, just so it has a lifespan and gets reviewed once in a while, so it doesn't get degraded. Or set a condition that it has to be maintained and not degraded, so we can do that. Um, and then as far as material, um I believe it should be a matte black, not gloss tile or paint. Uh that way you don't have sun glare, shine. It's uh that's sort of like. It puts work life better. Oh, thank you. Um. And I believe that's, that falls within time, place, manner.
I was confused about the two-year thing, so. You can't put something up for one day? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I am saying. If we wanna kick that out, we can kick that out and have that discussion. I was just kicking down.
Yeah.
Hmm, and I was trying to understand the idea.
Yep.
Could, could, could I chime in for a second?
Sure.
Um, the, because you can't base your regulations on content. Um your sign code right now, it prohibits billboards and basically it allows big things sort of, but it doesn't, it. Defines those dimensions, so it's not a standard billboard type um. Uh format. The two years is also kind of outside of the normal commercial time period. So that, you know, if it, the shorter the time period, the more commercial churning you can get out of this. Um, so. You know, everyone is in favor of artistic murals that you've seen. You remember those, they're great. My concern is what the wars were fought over in the city years and years ago was over commercial. Advertising visible from the freeway. So when you talk about these historic areas, keep in mind the big money sites. Any place that's visible to the freeway, you get a much bigger audience, much more marketability. If you're Budweiser, you'll put it up there two years, no problem. Um, those sorts of things. That's why these weird limitations on time and size are in there. It's so that it sort of defies the normal commercial, um, profile that they live with.
Thanks.
Dan, my understanding that those specifics have already been created, like in the code for Milwaukee. And the city of Portland, is that correct? And we're just borrowing a couple pieces from that existing code just to make it less complicated?
Well, the Portland is sort of the ground zero for litigating sign codes. My partner Tracy Reeve used to litigate, defend the city of Portland against these, you know, many, many, many federal lawsuits. Uh, over their regulations and she learned the hard way, the city learned the hard way, what they can and cannot do. Um, so right now their mural code, uh, has a two-year minimum. Uh, the question I'm not clear on is exactly how do they administer it? Uh, my observation is that the city has a, a lot of very artistic murals. And, uh, it doesn't have, I'm not aware of any in the area that are, you know, grossly commercial. So something about the program has brought that result about. And you should go ahead and emulate that as best you can. It'd be good to find out exactly how do they do this? So as to avoid content that they don't really want. Because the objective for decades has always been artistic things. Took them decades to get here. How, how did they do it?
Correct. Uh, I have another question for you, uh, related, uh, would it be possible in terms of manner to, um, uh, regulate? The maximum elevation above street level or ground level, uh, that the maximum height of mural could be. For example, fifteen feet above street level.
Yes.
That, that might, that, that may be, uh, I just had that idea, maybe regulations that would prevent the billboardization of fronts. Right. On, on, keep them on a human scale.
Alright, I'm, I'm sort of trying to collect things that we're agreeing about. Are we agreeing about that? Anybody opposed to this keep it low idea? Alright, we got four votes for keep it low. What other questions should we answer, Jackie?
The other piece that I wanted more clarity on was the, there was a comment in the packet about. I think it was from Arthur, let me find it, um. Something about funding and that Portland had a funding mechanism to make the mural successful. I, I didn't understand the specifics of that.
I think there was a portion of the conversation that went towards something like, but of course, if the city is the only one. It's allowed to put up the murals, then the city has more control. But of course, the city doesn't have any funding to put up murals. Like the city would have ownership of them, was the concept as I understand.
Yeah, so, so the city of Portland has a public arts program where they solicit and fund murals. Um, and that also allows them to have more regulation over the content of those murals.
So, uh. Let's say we develop something like that at some point as the work plan in the future. Um. Wh- what's the legality with, uh, the bullies of America coming and asking us for money, right? And I'm sure that's what you'd ask as well, um, you know, like, how does Portland deal with that? Dan, I suppose that's for you.
That's the question I have. I don't know how they do it. Um, I assumed it was something through the funding program where they're able to get at content. That's all, that's all I can guess about. And that's why it kind of requires sort of a deep dive with someone in. The, maybe the Portland City Attorney's Office, cuz, you know, this was decades of expensive multimillion dollar litigation. That city lost, 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 and now has come up with this set of regulations. My observation, it works. How do they do that? You know, I, I think there's something more to it than just the code.
I, I can speak a bit to, you know, I don't wanna go too far down a rabbit hole, but speak a little bit to how public art programs like that generally work, which is. You have, you know, identified, you have funds and perhaps you have a committee or a city council, and then you do a call for murals or for public art. You don't just, uh, have groups asking you for money, you actually have an application and a vetting process. And you've said, uh, you know, we are looking for, um, you know, a piece of art that would reflect this particular theme. Or this, uh, you know, community value that we're trying to espouse. Um, so you put the boundaries around what you want, and then you have a jury process in which you select that. Rather than, uh, groups coming and asking for funding for their murals.
So I guess the question is, you know, just since we're trying to give you direction is, you know, that sounds. Like a good idea to me, um, but also recognizing that Dan says it's, you know, it's pretty complicated, um. You know, would you be able to accurately, you know, estimate what, what type of resources that would be for you to? Go into that rabbit hole, go down that rabbit hole.
Yeah, well, if there was, uh, strong interest from, you know, a majority, you could certainly research that. Um, it's definitely a brand new program and probably half a staffer.
And I, I'm gonna touch on what Gladys said a while back of not spending a ton of time on this cuz of all of the other things on our work plan. And as, as much, like many things that we talk about, like, it would be lovely to be, you know, throwing money at the arts and making everything really beautiful. Like, this is very low on my priority list and I think council's current list of goals. Um, so I do just wanna flag that of I don't really wanna get into how do we make a program to, to do a wonderful thing? That we don't have really any money to do. Or staff time.
I would sum that up as it's expensive and time consuming to have a permissive mural code. Right? The cheap, quick thing is to say no. But we didn't get, we didn't get, we didn't get to know, but we got some restrictions on the, on the historic. And we just got a restriction on the fifteen feet.
Mm hmm.
And let's reevaluate in two years. And if, you know, what's working well, we have that. And opportunities for improvement, we have that as well and could potentially expand it in two years from now.
Well, and so Grant had touched on a bunch of the different time, place and manner requirements the group had discussed in the notes. Um, and I generally would also agree with those of like, yes, the, the folks who are smart at this and talk about it. Have a better idea of a good idea than I do. And so I think generally agree with Grant and that those people that, what they discussed. And I don't remember all the specifics, were good ideas.
How do we do?
Yeah, I think so. I think if I sum up a little bit of that is, uh, time, so a minimum of two years. I think there was also the idea of maybe five years, um, place. I think you had a good conversation around that. We got some good guidance on that. Um, manner, I think in the recommendations you heard, like, the materials, right, of paint or tile, only like no neon, no. Um, uh, nothing reflective, I think was an important piece. Um, and then size, I don't know if you've talked about this, but I think in the, um, in here was some just pieces of like size should be limited. I think in Portland, they specifically say thirty feet in height, we talked about fifteen feet in height. Um, in the city of, um, Milwaukee, they talk about like a percentage of surface area. Um, and I think also the group talks about, don't cover windows, don't cover doors. So if that's, if we need to reduce that, we could. So those are generally the things we think we've heard from the outreach that we, you know, the very targeted, limited outreach that we did. Um, if you're good with us from taking those as a first draft and of course, running them through our city attorney to make sure that they're, that they would be legally defensible. We can go with that, or if you have other, um, things you wanted, or you wanna modify some of the things I just said, let us know.
Uh, fifteen feet was an arbitrary number, so, uh, if there's a better number that makes sense, then great.
And Portland has a lot more taller buildings, so thirty feet feels very tall for this place.
Yes.
Yeah.
I feel like closely related to the fifteen foot, keep it low concept was, is the idea of. Like percentage of the wall, percentage of the building, covering windows, that kind of fits in that second category of concept to me. Or are we, are we interested in restricting the size of it, or can somebody paint their whole building up to fifteen feet? Which way do you guys?
I'm in favor of them doing whatever they want, as long as it's below that height.
So, so unrestricted except height, very, but Grant is pro broad. Others wanna chime in on the broad versus tall question?
I mean, I don't have an exact number, but I could see that, yeah, you know. Fifty percent of it's a mural or, I mean, I, I think the height thing, I agree with Grant is probably more important, but certainly, yeah, not blocking doors, windows. I don't know that you need it to be a hundred percent of the fifteen foot below area.
I'm not sure that Grant is saying that.
No, I know Grant isn't. I agree with him on the fifteen feet. I don't agree with him on the do whatever you want.
So, others on the, on the broad coverage question, wanna give some guidance? Choices, broad coverage is okay, or we should restrict?
I assume it's still restricted by the billboard regulation, right?
I'm sorry, Tim, what?
It's still restricted by the billboard regulation, right?
And that's good enough for you?
I'm not sure what the billboard regi- regulation is, but.
This, maybe this question for Dan, but I was understanding that if we're allowing murals, the billboard restriction is kind of irrelevant.
Ri- right. That, uh, right now, the freestanding signs in the city code can be. Not exceed a total of sixty-four square feet, an area not exceed two faces. If it's a big parcel, it can be up to a hundred square feet. So there, it's knocked out the standard commercial formats.
And so our murals cannot be bigger than that hundred or sixty-four, is that correct, Dan?
Well, you'll, you'll need to, you know, deal with this because, um. You'll have to just, it does kind of open the door. And so that's why the two-year minimum, that kind of, uh, defies the normal billboard. Uh, timeframe, they don't like to keep, they don't have two-year lease periods, they're usually shorter than that. But they could, you know.
And, and Dan Schmona's indication, if, um, we set up mural code, billboard code not applied to mural code, is that correct?
Um, I don't, it's very hard to draw that distinction because you're talking about the thin layer of. The, the message, the, the thing that you're talking about, structuriness. So, you know, most billboards are just a, uh, a plastic film. That's a sheet that's spread over the, the billboard face. Um, they, so it's, you'd have to really get into the technology of how these things are applied. Um, cuz this would be an exception, this would be all one sign code. This would allow big things.
May I make, make one more comment about the difference between murals and, and billboards? Um, one piece that I think is common in code like this is, um, not allowing the building owner to be compensated. For the mural to be put on the building site, right? So billboard, the building owner is gonna get, probably likely going to get paid for hosting that billboard. So I think that's another piece that we saw as being very standard in other codes that we would probably wanna include. The building owner cannot be compensated for the mural, so there's not a commercial interest of the building owner to have something on their site.
Yeah.
Do people support that idea?
Yes.
Alright, four votes for, four votes.
I saw the all thumbs up on that.
No Pepsi. Alright, I, uh, I wanna move on, but I think we're leaving some unanswered questions here.
Anything else? I think, I think, I think we've got the direction we need. This is just a very tricky issue and I really appreciate you diving into it.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, I've gotten some good feedback that we can then take in and Dan can help us. With writing a first draft.
I always wanna take a second to thank Jackie for leading the really complicated issue and, uh, Kevin and Dustin and Dan for supporting this. And then just our community members who really took the time, um, they also really struggled with these issues. It was, um, really fun conversations, but also super hard to like narrow down what we were going to see, so. Um, we'll, we'll take, we'll wrestle with this some more and bring you a product for your consideration probably in January.
I said one clarifying question. We talked a lot about buildings exclusively, um. Is, was there any thought regarding any other structures, trash cans, lamp posts, retaining walls, et cetera? Does the rest of council care?
I think retaining walls were, I think, mentioned.
Tainted wall mentioned, I didn't know if, uh, we wanted to talk about those or any other structures that could and have in other places been used. As, um, mural media.
So we own all the lamp posts, so I don't really see that.
I assume the trash cans are.
But aren't we getting new trash cans too, right? Like that, that would or could be. Places to display some form of art?
Outside of, outside of just building.
City-supported art.
Right.
If, if they're city trash cans, we get to decide what goes on them.
Correct. If, if there's, um, a structure on private property that's not a building or wall. Do we care if a mural is put on it, is my question for the rest council?
I just don't see that example yet. And what is it? It's not a trash can, it's not a lamp post, it's not a, any wall, what is?
You, you could have a trash enclosure, a freestanding structure that is not a part of the primary building. But, uh, uh, place where you can keep your trash. Dumpster, dumpster enclosure. There's also the aspect of, uh, if you wanna prohibit freestanding, do you wanna make sure that it's adhered to a building versus a freestanding mural?
Uh, pri- privacy walls, there are a number of.
Shipping containers that face the interstate.
Of all kinds of, uh, options that are not buildings or retaining walls explicitly.
Those would all qualify as signs and would be regulated by the sign code, including billboards and murals. So I don't recommend you release all those surfaces from regulation.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Alright, we're moving on. Great, we're gonna take a break.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie and team.
I wanted a break.